Alright, we're good to go.
Okay, welcome to this evening. I am going to call the Canton Union School District sixty-six board meeting together. Monday, December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four at seven P M. Please call the roll.
Ben Bishop.
Here.
Jane Lewis.
Here.
Anne Gersonich.
Here.
Matt Keys.
Here.
Mike Krulak.
Here.
Brent Perry.
Here.
Jordan Stanley.
Here.
Please don't forget to silence yourself. Please stand up and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any amendments to the agenda? My balls on me, I guess, no. We'll move on to good news. Building reports. Anybody have anything they want to say?
I do.
Okay.
Um, I wanna give a shout out to Tori Christensen and Emily Chagillam. They collaborated um and created a really cool project. Our kindergarten's artist students. They created drawings of monsters and then they sent those monster drawings over to the middle school. And Tori had her eighth grade's art students create three dimensional ceramic monsters. And then today we brought all the kids together and they had cookies and punch and they. I provided them with conversation starters where they talked about their artwork, how they created it, how their monster looked like it felt, the colors that they used and different things. The eighth graders were awesome role models for our students. Um, and it was just really neat to see. So uh just a shout out to both of those art teachers. They did a great job of collaborating. And um thinking out of the box and bringing those kids together, so.
Sounds like fun. Yes?
Jay's absent, um but Madrigals was this weekend and the high school kids. I went to the tea on Saturday. Since he's not here, they did an awesome job. It was, it was really such a in the mood for the holidays. He did a great job.
Madrigals are wonderful. Yes ma'am.
So we did pod door decorating. So the art teachers collaborated as a group together with their students. To decorate the pod doors and we invited you guys and I know it's busy time of year and so some of you did come out, but I have the results. Um, Pod B is our Facebook likes for the people's choice. Um, and then Pod B also won the votes for everyone that came out, so. They won in each category except for group effort was Pod A, so. Thank you all for taking time out to come vote and check our doors out online and in person.
It was fun and thanks for inviting us. Had a good time. Anybody else? No? Okay, uh C H student report.
Owen is not with us tonight. He's out sick.
Poor Owen.
Yeah.
Additional good news.
Um, I would like to highlight as we've done for several years now, Nets for Vets is supported by our school district. And that was done at multiple buildings across the district to raise funds. Um, Nets for Vets raises money for the Honor Flight, so. It's a great experience for those veterans to have a chance to go to Washington D C and a nice welcome home that many of them did not get when they left Vietnam, so. Always proud of the district for their involvement with with the Honor Flight.
I have a good news. Coach brought his football team out to the Elks Big Charity Ball. This weekend and they, the boys bus tables and delivered. Um, served all the food and they were very polite gentlemen. They were great. Everybody was talking about how wonderful they were. It's good.
Fortunately, we brought a lot of our offensive linemen, so they ran short on portions, I think.
Well, could be, but they did do a great job. They were pretty tall, big boys, yeah. But they were nice. Thanks for bringing them. Anybody else? Okay. Recognition of audience requests to address the board. No audience tonight? Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, which will be from eight A through eleven E. Any discussion or questions about it? No? Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Still moved.
Second, Ben. Please call the roll.
Jane Lewis?
Yes.
Anne Gersonich?
Yes.
Matt Keys?
Yes.
Mike Krulak?
Yes.
Brent Perry?
Yes.
Jordan Stanley?
Yes.
Ben Bishop?
Yes.
Okey dokey. Number E, eleven E, consider approval of project C four, three, four, five. Canton High School Vocational C T E renovation phase two.
So this is, we did phase one last summer. This is phase two. The major work of that is the new welding room. Um, the bid came out at five hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, uh, revenue, fifty thousand dollars of investment, so some good news there.
Wow.
So, Zorgus Construction did get the bid. They have done more force before and have always been a good contractor for us.
Any other questions, guys?
It's like a Christmas miracle.
Yeah, that was what that was, wasn't it? Entertain a motion to consider approval of project C. Four, three, four, five Canton High School Vocational C T E renovation phase two.
Some moves.
First, second. Please call the roll.
Anne Gersonich?
Yes.
Matt Keys?
Yes.
Mike Krulak?
Yes.
Brent Perry?
Yes.
Jordan Stanley?
Yes.
Ben Bishop?
Yes.
Jane Lewis?
Yes. Eleven F, consider approval of less resolution in support of Illinois Vision twenty thirty.
So Vision twenty thirty is piggybacking off of Vision twenty twenty. Um, for those of you that aren't aware, Vision twenty twenty was put together by the I A S A, the I P A. The I A S B, all Doc's favorite things, acronym.
Yes, so.
Uh, I has, yeah, I has Bo, um, the S C S D D, the I A R S S. The I A A S E and the Association of Illinois Rural and Small Schools, so. It's a bunch of, uh, really, it's, it's all the large organizations, educational organizations in the state. It is their goal to create a vision, um, and then lobby to meet the needs of school districts across the state. What came out of Vision twenty twenty, the main piece of it was our evidence-based funding formula, which is a huge, been a huge positive for all districts across the state of Illinois. Uh, they feel like they have accomplished their goals and vision for Vision twenty twenty. So now they've moved on to Vision twenty thirty and they're asking boards to pass a resolution and support. Of Vision twenty thirty and that's what, that's what I'm here asking for tonight. Uh, Vision twenty thirty, um, there's four main pillars to it. Number one is to promote future-driven skills that allow for more college and career exploration. Uh, this includes um dual credit courses, which I'm very happy with where our districts at. I think we do a great job of promoting that. Expanding the dual credit teacher pool, which is a need that most districts have, including us. And the study of the impact of A I. Uh, number two is to enhance student safety and well-being. Um, of course, funding is one of the things they're advocating for with that, but also for the state to create guidance. Um, a roadmap, a template, whatever you wanna call it, and a centralized network for schools to utilize and follow. Right now, we're all kinda on our own trying to figure this out. Um, so asking for the state to get more involved with that and also provide funding to help with school safety. Uh, the third pillar of it is to attract and retain a high quality and diverse educator pipeline. Uh, we all know the teacher shortage is a significant issue, so no surprise that it's uh one of their top things that they're working towards. Um, number four is to promote curriculum instructional, instructional flexibility to meet the unique needs of local communities. The biggest part of this one is they wanna fight hard against unfunded mandates that really restrict us in what we do. And to free up the time for us to teach what is essential and and get some of the other things out that we're now mandated to do. Questions about Vision twenty thirty?
Do we have anybody from our district on that? I know. I don't care. I'm just asking. There's a bunch of names. I didn't read all of them. A bunch of people that are on that.
Uh, yeah, I, I think this is a, a great group. Um, they learned through Vision twenty twenty if they come together and work together rather than. Having separate agendas for each of them. They, they've been able to have a lot of success with the legislature, so. Excited to see that they're going down this route and um excited to see what comes out of it.
I like elimination of those un-ven-funded mandates. Okay, any questions? Any more? Okay, entertain a motion to consider approval of resolution in support of Illinois Vision twenty thirty.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay. Did you get him? I think it was Anne and then who, Ben?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Matt Keys?
Yes.
Mike Krulak?
Yes.
Brent Perry?
Yes.
Jordan Stanley?
Yes.
Ben Bishop?
Yes.
Jane Lewis?
Yes.
Anne Gersonich?
Yes.
Reports. District sixty-six metrics report.
Any questions on?
Okay. Discussion items. Discuss re- um revisions to board policies first reading.
Yeah, so nothing uh earth-shattering in these. A lot of it's updates and footnotes and end notes and legal references, so. No concerns on it.
They must have been sleeping, because normally they have three or four things. Okey dokey. Uh, Canton High School Education First twenty twenty-six Belize trip presentation. You are taking the board, right? To Belize?
Alright, good evening. I'm Amanda Valentina, world history teacher at the high school. And I am proposing a trip to Belize at the end of June twenty twenty-six. This trip would provide a unique experience at a slightly lower cost compared to a European trip. Which would potentially allow more C H S students to participate in travel. This will enable students to experience diverse cultures firsthand and visit historical sites they have studied in class. Immersing students in another country's culture and history is an unparalleled educational experience that fosters curiosity and passion for learning. I witnessed this myself when I took um our summer trip to Rome and Athens with the students. And I have a just a really short little testimonial from a couple of the kids. Um, Ella said, my school trip to Rome and Athens was an unforgettable experience that furthered my appreciation. For ancient history and culture. Exploring famous landmarks like the Colosseum and Parthenon gave me a deeper connection. To the civilizations that shaped the modern world. The trip also allowed me to connect with my classmates in a new way as we shared incredible moments of rich history. And explored the vibrant atmosphere of both cities. Owen, who's not here tonight, uh, sent me this. The memories that I and many others have made on this trip are ones to remember and reminisce on for the rest of our lives. Visiting four different nations has ultimately yielded more knowledge of other cultures, people and history. I wanna thank Mrs. Valentin and E F Tours for giving C H S students the opportunity to travel outside of our continent. So this proposed trip to Belize would span eight days, including in those eight days, our two days for travel. With no cost to the school district. We would depart from Peoria Airport and some of the highlights of this itinerary include visiting Maya ruins. Touring a hot sauce factory, making corn tortillas with local women, visiting the Saint Hermann's Blue Hole National Park. And visiting a chocolate farm as well as going to Belize's Barrier Reef. The trip cover, costs would cover flights, travel protection, a dedicated tour director who would be with us the entire time. Site admissions, accommodations, transportation and majority of the meals. Upon approval, the next step would be to host a parent information night for interested student families, allowing them to register. Uh, registration would be open for grades nine through eleven and I've already have had some interest in my world history classes. Once registered, students can then just make monthly payments uh to help pay for the trip. And I also organize several fundraising opportunities to help assist students in financing their travel expenses. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, wanna discuss it?
Any questions?
What's the total cost?
Yeah, so the total cost for this is four thousand two hundred and nine.
Not bad.
So it comes out to roughly two hundred and thirty, two hundred and twenty a month.
Anne, you okay with it?
You're asking me?
Yeah, for them to go. If you wanna go.
Deal with my kid this year.
Going chaperone?
He has no desire to go. Surprise.
I make him go. Absolutely, yes.
Doc?
Yeah, absolutely. It's a real place.
Matt?
Yeah.
Yes.
No concern.
Go ahead.
Alright, well, thank you so much.
Thank you. It's easy to spend somebody else's.
By the way, thank you for doing all this. Takes nerves of steel to take kids somewhere. Thank you so much. C, discuss proposal for Canton Union School District sixty-six youth sports program.
Hi, everyone. I first wanna recognize the members of the committee. Um, board members, Dr. Brent Perry and Mike Krulak. Um, other members of the community were Bobby Horton, Josh Jokums, Dorian Conhorse and Mitch Coonrod. Also, uh, Mr. Drenzy took part in the committee and myself, of course. Um, so I, I did pass out a, a six-page document. I reduced it the best I could. Uh, the last few pages are just an appendix kinda helping you understand um costs and and where that's spread out, so. Um, first and foremost, um, coming out of the athletic committee. Um, we decided to propose this um youth sports program. Uh, the youth sports program would focus on participation, enthusiasm and skill development. Those would be kinda the three pillars of. Um, what we're looking for and what we're pushing uh down into these lower levels, pri- primarily fifth and sixth grade, but. But these um, these activities would be junior high football for grades six through eight. Youth volleyball for grades five and six, youth basketball for boys and girls, grades five and six. And then um continue with our sixth graders playing junior high softball and ball and basketball or softball and baseball. Um, those sixth graders would primarily make up a JV team. We have, have always ran, especially in softball. We started this past year with baseball, run a limited schedule for JV. We would try to make a full JV schedule so they have an entire season of JV baseball along with what we call varsity baseball, same as softball. Um, so moving on, um. So those expansion, that expansion, um, grades five and six and, and youth basketball would run. Boys, January and February. These are just games. Practices would start ahead of that. Uh, January and February for boys, October, November for the girls. Um, try to, try to host about, well, not host, but try to play in about twelve to fifteen games. Um, right now, uh, around town, uh, some of the programs are playing in upwards of forty games for, for our students. Um, we would try to run about twelve to fifteen games for basketball and then the, the expenditures would be, would be below their cost around the program. Um, youth volleyball, uh, runs in, runs January through March, again, about twelve to fifteen matches. Um, we can, we can accomplish basketball and volleyball with the facilities that we have. Um, volleyball, we think we can get by with, hosted with having one more net. So adding, adding one net system, so it would be pole, net, padding. Um, adding one more net system for the remainder of um, the uh. For the junior high and the elementary kids that are, that would be doing volleyball. And junior high football, okay, that, that runs in the fall, August through October. Try to get them six to eight games. Football would be probably the most difficult to schedule. I wanna make sure that I bring that up. Um, for the simple fact of getting a hold of schools and I want you to know I have not done any of this work yet. Um, because I wanted to present, we wanted to present to the board, the committee wanted to present to the board first. So getting about six to eight games. I foresee a lot of schools when we reach out telling us, hey, our schedule is full. Good luck. Um, with that being said, uh, and looking at some of the schedules, um, some schools play others twice. Um, so in playing others twice, maybe they would eliminate that game and play us. Uh, and allow us to do that. If we can't get six to eight games, we could always have the inter-squad scrimmage type games, especially the first year. Um, so expenditures for all of those, um, if I're on the budget overview. So budget overview for, overview for sixth grade football startup would be fifty-two thousand with an annual cost of thirty thousand dollars. Uh, just, as just a reminder, helmets, shoulder pads, other safety equipment could possibly build it, be built into our risk management plan through tort. Um, and that, the reconditioning of that, not only purchasing but reconditioning runs through that for the high school. Um, we would be outfitting football kids for about six hundred dollars an athlete. Um, it takes about a thousand dollars to outfit our high school, um, football players. So, uh, in reaching out to Rydell, when I talked with him, uh, he, he gave me some suggestions for J F L equipment. I asked him what one step higher than J F L equipment would be and that, those are the numbers I ran um for this document. So our high school kids primarily are in Speed Flex Two helmets. These were like Speed Flex helmets, so a very high-quality helmet. Just not, not quite up to the high school standard or level. They do have, it is, it does meet the high school and Oxy standards. It just is a little bit. Um, less comfortable, I would say, more than less protective. Um, so fifth and sixth grade basketball, running four teams. Um, startup cost on that would be about twenty-seven thousand dollars. That's including event staff, officials, coaches. Um, obviously, our coaches' salaries would have to be um in the collective, or put in the collective bargaining agreement, so I don't know how the union would present that, but. Those were just my best guesses on how we would um execute the salaries. Uh, with the annual cost for fifth and sixth grade basketball being about eighteen thousand. Fifth and sixth grade volleyball, about a fifteen thousand dollar startup cost. Uh, the net system primarily being a big chunk of that. Uh, last time I bought net systems, each pole was nine hundred dollars, so um it adds up pretty quickly. Uh, the annual, and then annual um cost on that, about ten thousand dollars for volleyball. Um, with that being said, um, adding essentially nine pro, nine new teams. Um, I would, the committee would like to propose a full-time middle school activities director. Um, this would be, uh, this role would be essential to the ongoing success. And growth of our fifth through eighth grade athletics and extra, extracurricular activities. Um, with the continued expansion of these offerings. And the increased demand for organized leadership and coordination in this dedicated position will ensure that our middle school students receive the highest quality programming and support. The activities director will be responsible for managing all aspects of athletics and I E S A student activities, including overseeing coaches. Coordinating schedules and fostering a positive and inclusive environment that promotes student development engage and engagement. So, um. I know I kinda bust through that quickly. I'm here to answer any questions you may have. I want you to know I did invite. Um, all of our committee members to either take part in the meeting tonight or watch online. I did have conversations with every head coach that this proposal impacts and I invited them to attend. Coach McCormick, head football coach, um, is here. Um, I invited them to attend or watch online as well, so, uh, Mr. McCormick's here because he was invited and wanted to attend, so if you have any questions of. Any of us on the committee, I'd be happy to answer.
The, the one other major piece to this is we need some type of storage facility for the junior high football equipment. Um, there are some options that we do have. I've talked to Rod about this, um. Um, we could use the, the current GACX garage, the GAC Shack for storage. Um, build them a new facility right by their current facility. Um, the cheapest route to go would just be to at Ingersoll, just build a new storage facility. Um, another option that, that was put out there is the building, uh, out by the stadium, the stores, the high jump mats and the pole vault mats and all those. Uh, needs some work done to it and so we could potentially replace that. Uh, Rod does believe that building is in good shape. It just needs the exterior rework. New siding, new doors, that type of thing to tighten it up and that is work that, that we do need to do to that sometime if we do keep it. Uh, we have some. Animals getting in there hurting some. Those mats are about fifty thousand dollars, so. Um, it would be advantageous to get that thing tightened back up one way or another. Um, I did ask Rod if we were to build a new s- uh, room for a new building for the GACX, what he would like to see. Uh, he is recommending a minimum of a thirty by sixty building, thirty foot by sixty foot, at least one ten-foot garage door. Ten-foot or higher ceiling, hundred amp service with a two-twenty welder plug, floor drains, natural gas and a hanging furnace. Um, with a half bath in there for them, so if you've ever been in that building, it's, it's an older block garage.
That is the kinda way to describe it as possible. Think of the truck that didn't have the floor, yeah.
Uh, Rod's intent if we put up a new building was, would be to be able to get all their equipment in there, including the new wing mower. Currently, they house it behind McCall School and then also would like to get the tractor in there to get, get that more expensive equipment out of the weather, so. There are some options and, and ways we could go in terms of either uh creating a storage facility or building a new space for the GACX and using that facility.
What renovations do we need um in the old GAC place so that our equipment's in good, protected and stays in good shape?
So right now, um, I, I walked out to, went out to the boys locker room storage area where many things are kept, I would say. Um, down one side, there's a, there's a wall of wooden cabinetry, the best way to describe it. And on the other side is a kind of a rack system. Um, my thoughts would be to remove that rack system, take it out to the, the GAC shed, which would become football storage. Buy three new cage style, um, equipment cages, cabinets, like what's currently in there. Um, for these additional um, younger, younger youth activities. Um, the equipment could, the equipment will be stored out there primary, the major. Uh, amount of storage that's gonna be necessary is out of season. Um, for helmets, shoulder pads, all the, for different pads and dummies and equipment that football uses. Um, during the season, we, we have a couple of options. We could move lockers out, out there for the kids. Um, for after school to go out and change, or we could use the current boys locker room that does have. It's my understanding they do have lockers large enough to fit their shoulder pads currently in.
They used to fit in there. Lockers, the same one I used.
Maybe the kids are bigger now.
What's that?
Maybe the kids are bigger now and they need bigger areas.
They're still junior high kids, I see, every day too, right? Like, yeah. I know they don't need bigger lockers.
They might need repair though.
As far as.
Just a tiny bit.
As far, as far as fields and kinda some, some logistical things, I guess, to discuss real, real quick. Is our intent from the committee standpoint is not to um try to have all these three-thirty practices. You know, we want kids still playing baseball and being able to play football like they currently do. Um, so I think some scheduling would have to take place where maybe this week you do baseball after school, this week you do football after school, that type of thing. The, the baseball team is now practicing at Ingersoll on that field. We would paint a football practice field between that baseball field and the school in that large area right there, so. It's, it's convenient. You don't have parents running kids um all across town trying to get to practice. We wouldn't play our games on around Fanastock Field for football. Um, baseball, we'd still go to Athletic Park, softball, we'd still go to Softball Complex and volleyball. Any of our gyms have bleachers and holes in the floor. Basketball, any of our gyms have baskets.
So the structure of the football team is not gonna be the old CFL where we have four teams?
Yeah, that's.
So we're.
Currently not the intent. Uh, we'd like to play compet- competitively outside of our school. With two, with two, two teams. Now, uh, this was designed with fifty kids. I have no idea if we're gonna get lots and lots of kids or. Or, you know, fifty's about where we're gonna stay. I don't, I don't know that answer. I have a list. I threw a list together of, of football schools that play junior high football. I'm at around fifteen right now, not. Not going too hard after it, um.
We would not play J F L teams, though.
You cannot play, yeah, you cannot play J F. J F L cannot play school teams. School teams could play, really, whoever. There's no sanction, there's no governing body.
My question, is that something we would entertain doing or not doing?
J F L's not supposed to play us, so I would assume that we would not, like, according to their. Right, Dr. Perry?
I get, I get most places follow the rules and we would, but. Anyhow.
There are plenty of junior highs programs in the area that get games scheduled now. If it so happens the first year we can't get games, we got enough kids, then you. Play the, the enroll for a thing.
Yeah, I mean, that's what, I mean, we talked about it.
Yeah.
Couple of weekends ago, right? I, and that's what I played. We were training eight quarterbacks and eight to ten running backs and twenty linemen and multiple tight ends and receivers that way and. So when you got to high school and got to be on a team together, there was, depth wasn't an issue, right? Now, that means you have to have enough kids that are interested, right?
Right.
And that was seventh and eighth only then, and we didn't do seven, six, you weren't allowed to. You still had to go play flight football at Duane, so.
Yeah, and this would be just a found, in my thoughts, just a foundation of what, what could be, you know, in the future.
Have you pulled, find out, maybe if the kids would sign up for the program?
I think. Don't worry about that.
I bet they would, no issue.
You know, I. We, our coaches would be ran through, I know the same, I H S A, I E S A, uh, um, coaching certifications. Um, you know, Lexi. Um you know, Lexi, our athletic trainer, would be seeing kids if they're in, I mean, we, you know, twenty five dollar activity fee to to play at the junior high. I would assume we would still, you know, still run off that rather than the, you know, hundred fifty, two hundred, two hundred fifty dollars that's spent currently.
So that's the big advantage, right? It's getting, JFL is expensive.
Well, also they have transportation to games. A lot of our kids can't do JFL because they can't make it to Metamora because their parents can't drive them. But if they can catch a school bus, they can.
And they're trying to get from baseball practice out to football practice at Hula Park, you know. Yeah, and it's right here, here it would be all centrally located at the middle school.
This would be something you'd be involved in, coach?
Yeah, no, I mean, it's something I'm excited about. I mean, obviously, being new here, one of the things that was always brought to my attention was get involved with the youth. Get involved with the youth and, you know, I see this as a way to tie those programs more together. You know, um from from the bottom up and I also see this as a way, you know, I've talked with Brad a little bit of. Um an overlooked aspect of developing some coaches as well, you know, it's hard to get people to coach, but. You know, the further you can go down, you can develop coaches at that level, which may eventually fill roles higher, so yeah, it's exciting.
Administrators, you know, you name it, yeah, definitely.
So so what about the, we talked about buses after practice too.
Right.
So that we can get kids.
An activity bus, about running activity buses after school.
Practice.
After the practices for the kids or even after games if no one picks them up, we might have to run buses then. And I think Farmington's running two or three buses every night for activities.
Any thoughts on how feasible that is?
Depends what time it is. I mean, they, Farmington has three vans too, so.
Okay.
And more than one activity bus to run everybody. I don't know how that's gonna affect the drivers. Per contract, but. It just depends what time it is.
I think we need to understand that, because I, as I talked to folks after our last discussion, that was something, there were lots of parents who were like, whoa, boy, that would make. Huge difference.
I think it does. Well, you know, like in the dark ages, when I went, you know, to school here in junior high, it was right here. The coaches drove the buses home.
Yes, that is true.
The coaches drove the buses and they played football right over there in Dr. Euna's field. There was more to it this building.
How about facilities for the practices? I mean, we are already busted at the seams.
Uh well, not too many people are having to run that second time slot. Um the the teams right now running in that second time slot, what I mean by that is at five or five thirty to seven, seven thirty time. Um they, it's it's primarily CTBA teams right now coming to use our facilities. Um after, after Eastview, um the YMCA being in Eastview, uh the Travel Basketball Association. Um using, using our elementaries. Now, we would probably have to seize, seize that with with this um taking place. Um but, you know, I I do think we have the facilities, you know, I would like to look into. Right now, I'm using a Google, Google Facility Calendar. It's a lot and a mess and it's not a mess. I mean, it we're, it's definitely fits, fits the bill, you know, but at the same time. You know, with adding that many more teams, it's just gonna, you know, congest that calendar even more. I'd like to take a look at a s- a facility use.
Yeah.
Calendar software, but at the same ti- and I, and I think Snap, the software that we use at the middle school and the high school for um all of our scheduling. Um and our online registrations for sports, uh you know, may have the ability to add that on. Um but I I definitely would like to demo a few things and and take a look at a facility use calendar, a dedicated facility use calendar rather than us just. Have created one on Google.
I uh kind of like the whole idea. I'm not gonna be around probably when you you make a major decision. But I kind of like the idea. I'm the guy that you heard stay in here. Maybe that's gonna give us a shot, a kick in the rear end. Uh and maybe we can kick the hell out of Metamora. I just, whatever it takes, whatever it takes, and I, I, I like the whole concept.
I was just wondering where the heck you're going, cause I assume we're gonna vote on this in January.
Well, I, yeah, I know, but sometimes, you know, it takes a while to uh throw the stuff together, so, but I. I wanted, I wanted to get that off my chest. I think it's a good idea. Uh and I think it's a, uh I think the coach over there is kind of sitting there going, oh, boy. Teaching kids how to do things.
So the real question, can we pay for it?
I like Jeff. He always has that great answer. Well, the way I feel about this is from the very first year I was on the board, we, Tom Snowman and I. Talked and talked and talked and talked about this. We wanted it restarted. We wanted, wanted it to keep going because we s- we saw the need of our kids. Not everybody getting the same opportunities to play and learn. And the truth of matter is, is my dad came from a very, very poor family. He played football for Canton High School. He got a a scholarship to to ISU to play football. And he played football for the um semi-pro team here. And if it hadn't have been for school, starting with his coach in the junior high, he'd have never made it. And I think it's, it's great for kids that don't have the money to do the big activities. Like, I highly, highly think we should do it. And if that building doesn't work out, maybe we can do a little repair.
Every program, every new program's gonna have things to work out.
Yeah.
But I think this is a foundation to start something for the development of our kids and our community and. Give kids who maybe need some incentive to stay in school or be more academically successful.
Yes.
And I think this is great to do it for, for, I, I, yeah. Brad did a ton of work on this presentation and the information is spot on, so again, kudos, that's, yeah.
I don't know, Doc. Several years ago, we all met together and started this. Would you remember when that was, Matt?
That was a long time ago.
Yeah. He said he had hair. He never had hair.
So, so what's the next step?
So my hope for tonight is any questions you have, gather those, so we can uh get the information and bring them back to you in January. If you have any guidance on what you course you'd like to take potentially for a storage building. I'm gonna just put up a storage building or use the the GAC s- area and put up a new building of some type or whatever. And I can start working on some, some rough numbers for that. That way you're aware of that, those costs and um really just trying to. Answer everything we can for you to make.
So facility, number one. Number two, transportation. All right.
Yeah.
Three is. Some stinking idea on you're gonna have enough people who are interested in being coaches.
It's gonna be tough.
Yeah.
Our philosophy on the committee was let's, let's try to put together what's right for kids. And I think the community will rally a- around what's right for kids.
I think you'd be surprised who'll come out of the woodwork that. You know, that would wanna coach kids.
I will say one thing we talked about is if, if the board would like to do this. Uh we're pretty confident we could get everything off the ground next year except for football. Football. Make it get off the ground for next year. It may take one more year, especially trying to schedule. You know, a lot of those schools, if not all of them, probably have their schedules set for next year.
I was gonna say, if that's true, isn't there an interim though, that we couldn't do some version of the? Just do the intermurals, split them up.
So I, I, the committee, I was telling them that when I coached JFL, Bushnell.
There you go. We were talking about this.
Played once or twice, they just, they called random school people and said, hey, you wanna play? And they played. So you always have that ability as well.
Yeah.
Not that JFL played a junior high program, but you know.
I remember when there were.
A lot of the football s- schedules that we looked at are Tuesdays. We were thinking Saturdays. Field's painted already, high school's practicing, they can be, you know, right there on Fanastock. Um uh Nick, do you?
Yeah, I mean, from looking doing a little bit that you said too, there's some schools around the area that um are playing same school twice. And like Brad said, and I just feel like those, there's an opportunity there. Obviously, no one's reached out yet. Um so, you know, to s- to see if any of those schools would be willing to play us. I think you might be surprised around this area. Um some of the schools that would, would, would take us and.
Play Tuesday and play Saturday.
Uh right, it would not be for lack of trying, I promise you that. We would do everything we could to try to get the schedules put together for next year. A past football coach and how football coaches like to run their sk- once they're set, uh nope, 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 you know, you know, so. But yeah, I think we do have some hope with those schools that play uh others twice. You know, there's, there's another pickup. Not only one pickup, we play both of those teams. Um so it's just a matter of, you know, putting the pieces of the puzzle together, the sooner the better, because it's, it's gonna be.
I think this is a great, great movement to start improving everybody and I think also getting the kids more involved. Not just going home and sitting on the computer.
I, I think we should talk about the AD position too. Right? But since we'll have names and things we have to talk about, we probably have to do that executive session, right?
The what pro?
The, the AD.
Oh, AD. I thought you said BD.
BD. You just think that when you look at me.
Matthew, you were the perfect student. No, well, I just would like to know if. If the building is going to be sufficient and no animals or mice or anything gets into our nice new equipment. I don't like mice.
I, I can tell you right now, Skunk was in our new, a brand new fifty thousand dollar mat building.
What happened?
So trying to keep mice out of a building is probably impossible, but we'll do, I mean, we do have pest control that takes care of our facilities around.
But I just want it to be not leaking and all that kind of stuff, so it's good for the.
It, it doesn't leak, Rod said it, it is a dry building. Um if we ever needed to, there is a gas furnace in there, so it can be heated, so.
Is that the one with the garage door on it? It's out there?
Down the east side of the school, east side of Ingersoll.
Yes.
It may need a new walk-in door. I think that walk-in door is pretty rough, but it's, it's pretty stretchy, pretty sound.
It would be nice to be able to have something for them to get the equipment put away, because we've spent a lot of money. On tractor and the mowers and everything else, and them just sitting out in the weather is not the best, right?
No, that's a good thing, because we just spent a lot. You're right, Matt.
And that was kind of where the committee took the, the large building out of the high school, because that one was in shambles. You know, it made sense to possibly have the GACS and all the mowers and everything right there in that brand new building along with the track. Um mats and everything, but since we've had other options and and they all.
The challenge is moving them out there and just building a larger, larger building out there is, is the infrastructure pieces.
Yeah.
Um there is some power out there. It's only a twenty amp breaker. There, there is no type of water. There is no type of sewer where. Um doing it there at Ingersoll School by the, the current GAC building, all, all those utilities are much closer.
And with the restroom, you'd have to run.
Yeah, that wouldn't be for the junior high club, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks, Brad.
That makes me nervous.
We'll see you next month with all those teams scheduled.
I mean, are we, should I start those?
We can do some research if you want to.
Like ask them if they would want to.
Yeah, it's, I think it's definitely. Get an idea of, it's gonna be pretty easy to get a schedules builder if it may take a little bit of time.
And then we'd have to. See about getting the building built too. Okay, thanks, guys. I appreciate it. That was good news.
Yes.
And also, you guys discussed course description for Canton High School. Twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year. Did you guys look at your course description book yet?
And I can uh cover the areas of change if you want for Jay since he's not here tonight.
That would be great.
Um so there's three major changes to uh review. The first one is in addition to a new English course. Uh for senior level English. Currently, seniors have a choice between technical writing and creative writing. Those courses are just one semester long, so the teachers have proposed to add a year class that would replace those semester classes. Uh the benefits of doing that is number one, it actually would be more accredited for colleges. Currently, technical writing is not accredited um by colleges. It's not recognized as a course that is suitable for senior English, so that would. Alleviate that issue. Uh the second benefit to it is scheduling, since it's a year-long course. The students would be in the course for the year and they wouldn't have to be um rotating around just the semester courses. That kind of prevents some. Issues for other courses. And the third is that it could align to the essential standards at the rest of the department. Um the course would be called Contemporary Literature and Film, and it would have a heavy emphasis on writing and analysis of film. Um which again is an accredited course and um so, yeah, so that's the, the first change. Um the second change is the addition of music appreciation as a dual credit course. Uh so currently, we offer eight in-house dual credit courses, so this would be a ninth dual credit course that would be offered. Um taught by our current band instructor. Um so that would be awesome. And then the third change is. Basically, some wording related to accelerated placements. So last year, the state implemented a mandate that stated that any student entering ninth grade. Who scored meeting or exceeding on a state assessment was automatically given an opportunity to take an advanced placement course. This year, they've retract that to take out the meets and only have the exceeds. So moving into next fall, any eighth grade student who gets an exceeds or ninth, tenth or eleventh, who gets an exceeds. On a state assessment then has the opportunity to take the next advanced rigorous course. Um so what they do at the high school level for like our eighth graders going into ninth grade. We provide all that data, then they call the parents and say, your child has scored at this level. They have the opportunity to take this course. It's up to you if they wanna opt in or out, so they do give the parents the choice, you know, to actually do that. They don't just stick them in the courses. So that next level course might be like an honors clo- course. It could be an advanced placement course. It's, you know, a variety of courses depending on what they are. In two years from now, the language goes back to those that meet and exceed, so just. So that, it's just, I, I think, you know, what probably happened is that, like us, they had a floodgates of kids. That met and exceeded, which caused staffing issues, which caused scheduling issues, which caused an array of issues that the schools weren't prepared to handle. And so they're backtracking a little bit on it, I think, and then just trying to slowly go back to it. So in the.
We're gonna have a flood of new teachers, no one mind, in two years.
Possibly. Yeah, or at least a flood of positions for. So, yeah, so that's the, so right now, the language is reflecting the new change that will be in effect for the fall, which is again, just those that exceeded. Will be offered those advanced courses, but then in two years from now, it will go back to meets or exceeds, so. Those are the major changes uh to the courses.
For highlighting.
Yeah, thanks. Makes it easier.
Any questions?
A pedokey. Thank you. I appreciate this being done too, a month early. It makes it easier for us. Thank you. The mom of a freshman college English teacher with writing, I thank you for her, because she'll be so excited. Because most high schools aren't doing heavy writing. And these kids, for the kids going to college, so they need to. Alrighty. Information items. Distribute percentages from county school facilities tax. I bet that's Jeff.
Yeah, uh we, so the attachment there shows you the percentage of our enrollment for in the county and how much we receive for percentage, uh percent, percent, sorry. Percent of sales tax. We're at forty five point four six eight three is our new percentage. We were uh forty five point six seven two. Uh this past year, last year, we got one point two six million dollars of facility sales tax. Remember, two hundred fifty thousand dollars that's debated for um to pay off, uh to make sure the bonds and tax rate is down. Uh so we average about a hundred and five thousand dollars a month. Uh this year, we're averaging about a hundred and. Uh, so we average about a hundred and five thousand dollars a month, um, this year, we're averaging about a hundred and almost a hundred and eight thousand dollars a month in sales tax.
Sounds good. Okay, future agenda items. Nobody's excited, okay. Alrighty, at. Seven fifty, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session, Ben? Second, uh, Jordan, please call the roll.
Mike Krulak? Brett Perry?
Yes.
Jordan Stanley?
Yes.
Ben Bishop?
Yeah.
Jane Lewis?
Yes.
Ann Gersonich?
Yes.
Matt Keys?
Yes.
We are live.
We are live. All right, get this. Um, seventeen A. Consider poss- it's consider approval of an agreement in lieu of expulsion for student one nine four four two as discussed in closed session.
So.
No movement.
It's Jordan and second. Matt. I'll let Jordan be first. Please call the roll.
Anne Gersnitch.
Yes.
Mike, Matt Kees.
Yes.
Mike Krulak, yes. Jane Lewis.
Yes.
Brent Perry.
Yes.
Jordan Stanley.
Yes.
Ben Bishop.
Yes.
Consider approval of memorandum of agreement of assistant girls wrestling coach for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty seven.
I moved.
Second.
Anne.
Anne. Matt.
Who's who was the first one?
I was first.
Anne.
Aqua second.
I didn't hear hear Anne.
All right. Matt Kees.
Yes.
Mike Krulak, yes. Jane Lewis.
Yes.
Brent Perry.
Yes.
Jordan Stanley.
Yes.
Ben Bishop.
Yeah.
Anne Gersnitch.
Yes.
At eight thirty four on entertain and motion two.
So move.
Second.
It wasn't me this time.
Wait a minute.
It wasn't me this time.
He's took it.
I can't believe you beat Doc.
She got mad at me last time.
It wasn't me this time. Can't believe you beat Doc.
You know, I could have. I mean, I just.
It wasn't me this time.
All right. But you know, one of these days I'm gonna fill it in and you're gonna be here saying.
Make a motion.
Matt Kees.
They kicked Matt Kees off the board.
So move. Mike Krulak, yes. Jane Lewis.
Yeah.
Brent Perry.
Yeah.
Jordan Stanley.
Yes.
Ben Bishop.
Yes.
Anne Gersnitch.
Yes.
Matt Kees.
Yes.
The second if you Matt.
Nobody says no.
Damn fine.
She's just saying no.